A meeting. We'll call this, uh, April fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting to order. Anthony, you want to lead us into that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
That's the, you're not.
Yeah, give him to. Give it to the commissioners, other two commissioners. Deal with it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the real estate exoneration presented this morning.
Second, all in favor?
What was the vote? I'm sorry, I was.
That's okay.
aggravating will making sure he wasn't changing jobs because he's on restaurant.
Exonations, no savings.
Okay, I.
You have to sign this.
And we've got our personal property. Exonations or cancellations. Since Commissioner Willie Sosa's done is on here, I move that we.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Staying.
So, well, you still.
They'll sign it.
Still has to sign it. If there's any refunds, you gotta sign twice.
I don't think there are.
Is that all you have for us?
Yes, it is.
Uh, I make a motion to approve first half payroll, uh, full setting.
Second.
All in favor? Any questions on vouchers and invoices?
No.
I don't have. I make a motion to approve vouchers and invoice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meaning minutes? She hasn't, somebody hasn't.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do I need state settlement? You do have state settlements and then you had that other thing.
Where are these state settlements? Don't see a folder.
It's not in a folder, it's just a sheet of paper.
Well, the other thing, did you see this? It's a. For that two-year thing. You know? So, but can you approve that as a, with the estate settlements or does it need to be on separate? Yesterday's.
But, I mean, basically, Larry's made a recommendation, I don't see a problem with what I see in here, just simply a professional division.
Oh, for the shared permission?
Yeah, it appears that that started hours. This just issue of being resolved by our agreement agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the estate settlements. All in favor?
Aye.
Ruth?
Yep. The first one is that agreement with the Leonard's Resource Center. Just that annual thing we did. And there are five copies. See the only one else is? Yep. I move that we approve the.
We'll see.
Leonard's Resource Center MOU.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, the next thing is. So this is the request for changing scope. For our. So what we're gonna do with the community development block grant that the commission got several years ago, for the Army Trump PSB water upgrade project. We're gonna change the scope of that project to only address the issues with the power tank. So the, the power tank thing and related solid costs can be, uh, pending through a five is, uh, community development block grant. But in order to do so, we have to change the scope, and that's what the paperwork that Ruth has is a change in scope. A budget issue, so that'll address the power. Is there any progress on any of the other issues they're having out there? Uh, we did secure a, um, West Virginia construction health development council critical with grant in the amount of two thirty-six thousand dollars. That included rents, but the operators can't monitor the, the tank levels. So which, if you can't monitor, you don't know what's in there, and that leads to a lot of loss of service issues. There was also a booster pump that had gone bad in one of their booster stations. So we're going to address that with the critical need to grant, and that is just signed by the PSE. So that there, those items will be ordered and installed, um, and then we'll go ahead and take that through differently. I move we approve the request for change in scope for that. Community development block grant for on.
Second, all in favor? And like Lisa said, this will only address the tank that is caving in and falling off the top of a hill.
Yeah, there's still a line. They, they do give me some line work, but the line work that they need is, there was not enough money remaining in that community development block grant to address the line work. So with the power tank being, um, in its incredibly dilapidated state, um, the decision was made to give the rest of the power tank, as recommended by the service mission. I'd like to have some new members on what the line work is gonna cross, like in places, if that's possible. I, I can probably get that information. Okay. That you want it in sections like. Like a phase of like, and then there's a deep water component, an armstrong component, and then I think there may have an amount hard to defend at all. We, we just need to know what's left so we can keep advocating for funding for them. What, do we know what's going on with the PSC? They're, they are scheduled for a hearing, I believe it's June first.
June the first.
Uh, that's one of the distressed utilities case, and as long as that pace is pending, no, when no funder is going to close on a loan for a lender. So currently, the project before we changed the scope was to address the power tank and all the lines that needed repairs from our concrete all the way to deep water and included fire. So a portion of that funding was USDA for utility service fund. USDA will not close on their side. Because this case is pending, and the reason being is if. Armstrong PSB was taken over by West Virginia American Water, West Virginia American Water, they probably, it's not eligible for USDA. So there, that's why they will not close on that, and that's actually in their regulations.
Number three, Ruth?
Okay, the third one with this. The DOJ grant that Cybers thought we weren't getting, and we are, and it's just, um, it's for the last holding of any. I don't know what's, you can say he is, it's like equipment reserve and trace evidence collection. This is what it is, I don't know if I have the paper, it's just accepted on the award. I move we accept. And that's actually some of the things.
Second. All in favor?
Almost said good job. Hey, Sheriff, good job to Cybers for getting that grant approved. So you have, you know the budget letter? Where else would they have a memo and sent it out? And I need some. For outside agencies. Basically, the same thing, I mean, you could agree that and then you'll turn on. All right, so, um, do we need to take action on that? You just made your vote to approve the Friday. The memo for like an inch was on the ladder for outside.
Okay.
Well, I move we approve both.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next thing is the request for bids for the CNI A grant. This is the fix, is it just around the top or all the brickwork?
No, it's just around the top.
Where the masonry needs repaired. It's just, I don't know how, what that.
And I had Dan Sneed review it, and he said it's good.
No motion. A motion to approve. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very, the REAP grant documents. Are these for Dan or what?
It's for Angela.
What is REAP? What does REAP stand for? Angela, I don't. Reclaiming environmental.
Producer and find all of the stuff in this.
All right, so is this a grant application or a? No, it's the award letter. Basically, what happened is we've got a bunch of money from, it was ten million dollars, and so we're a sum. Or so, two hundred thousand, it's an award letter, and then there is a, were the other documents in there?
There should be.
Um, but it's just basically pay that we're gonna spend two hundred thousand, but, I know we have to spend it by December thirtieth, because that's their deadline for their money. I move that we approve that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the next is, uh, proclamation for fair housing. We approve the proclamation.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we rehabilitate environmental action plan. All right, the next thing is, uh, we'll add any comments we have to add. It's just accepting. I move we approve it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Super fine, yeah.
I'll let you put something on my side just this once.
That's a lot of singing.
All right, and then we have a new person to appoint, we take King Paige Jim McCartney.
Yes.
At five turn to end up through the first point twenty-five, those places.
Yes.
I move we approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll work on the language for you.
Okay.
You were on this up this, um, I've probably been up, got up first. Don't have one sleeping.
Yeah, I got an hour and a half.
There you go. Now you know how I feel that day by coming in when I.
That's why I'm looking forward to going home.
So I'm getting to tell you what you sent me that I could, I'll be trying changes.
You have two pieces.
Yeah, I've been having pains with it. Yeah.
Which question?
Yeah, oh, gosh, I would do a great. That's what I'm.
Well, I'm gonna sort of line on that one.
What's that?
I said, what is the bottom line on that one?
Well, we have the same amount.
Oh, I know.
It's, it's a lot better. I know that would be.
All right, so, was to bring them out?
Yeah, just shoot two.
So the two, two companies were Dan Hill Construction here at Bay County and.
Uh, GSC. They're an independent authorized builder. By General Steel Corporation.
Yeah, General Steel.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Yeah, it's through, from a General Steel Corporation. Ten, six thirty-nine, Ratford Road. Littleton, Colorado.
All right, well, Dan Hill Construction's estimate is eight hundred eighty thousand even.
And. This, as long as it has everything on it, uh, price for erection labor and equipment, concrete material labor, and equipment budget is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars.
That company was supposed to price the building itself and the labor, the one she he said would have. Building material of a hundred.
Oh. Okay, all right, so let's back up. Thank you. The, uh, building itself is a hundred and forty-three, eight hundred. And the labor is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So, let's see here, toe, bottom line. It's still, it's still, yeah, half of that.
Just about a third.
Total's three thirty-one, eight hundred.
Do we have to hold the originals or can we return this to fire association? Uh, we'll ask one when we're in our audit.
Yeah, generally, they're held.
So. You guys need a copy?
We're given the copy, what we would ask is, uh, that you approve.
Approve some.
Handing, handing us, uh, looking over it and.
Yeah.
Making sure it's everything we. Thought it was gonna be.
Was this in the, in the budget range that your board anticipated out there?
Yes, I actually.
Yeah, you, you may wanna hand this to Mike and let him look at it, because there's no site work or gravel included. In their estimate, so. But. A third, yeah.
Well, we, we can call them and talk to them, but they decide without.
Yeah. Well, I mean. We'll make a motion to approve, we're gonna make a motion to approve one of them. Yeah, General Steel. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the General Steel Corporation bid as long as it meets the specs.
I accept.
All in favor?
Uh.
Let us know.
Well, let's. I guess, can you? Oh, I guess, I guess we, we will take a break till nine thirty? Yeah, we'll, we'll take a break, yeah. Call the meeting back to order. Uh, Angela, nine thirty?
Thank you. So Monday, the planning commission held a third public hearing of the. There was no members of the public after meeting, but they were holding it. Um, they dated this on Zoom, I'm gonna kind of give it over to him, he's gonna kind of go through the four, um, open houses that he had. And, um, I'd be here for questions, but the, um, planning commission, they did vote, they were happy so far, and so they approved the first, you know, hearing of it. So the, the final hearing for them will be May first. Um, that'll be when they actually make a motion to adopt the plan as is, or they may decide to change it, and then you guys on the third of May. Will hear whatever their recommendation, you can either say it's good to go, or you need changes, we might have to delay it another. So if we want changes.
That's what I asked, if the commission wants changes, it's gotta go back to the, we gotta make a record, whatever commissioner may want to.
Yeah, if you want changes, now, you know, now you can send it to Nick, you know, if you can make those changes. If not, if May third, you're still not happy with it, and you want something changed, it would just need to go back to the planning.
Okay, so the planning commission has made a decision as is right now, right?
As it's with some changes that we're gonna discuss.
Okay.
Got some changes, so I'll let.
They wanted some changes, okay, okay.
And then we'll. And so on, so we have until May first to get to back into the document, planning commission. Yes, yeah, yeah, and it's already ran into paper, just like, because you had to do it three days, and it's already in the paper, you guys were May third, they're May first. And then if we did have changes, I hope we don't, but if we did have changes after, on May third, what happens in the process? Um, you probably just do it at the end, if it's not a major like mapping change, if you want a sentence added, I don't think you need to delay it a whole nother month, you could probably approve it with one or two items.
We can make it, we can make amendments to it at any time.
You don't have to do it every ten years, you can do it every year, every three months, you're probably not for this.
But as commission, the commission can make a change to it anytime they want. Bring it back.
Planning commission, if, I mean, if there's a process.
We would send it back to the planning commission and what the recommendations the commission wanted, and then they would look at it, and just like the US, like corner plan. We still made the final decision, right, so we could send, we can send our recommendation back to the planning commission, planning commission says yes, no, we'll put them in, but. And bring it back, and then we can change it, whatever we want to do, but there is a.
In May, if there's something vague, you know, it's just a sentence added, I don't think we need to wait a whole month, I think we go ahead and adopt it as is. Um, and then like I said, if you do see something two months later that you're like, wait, I really don't like it, it's the same procedure, you know, they go to have to go to the.
Since we have a meeting on the eighteenth, if we have any edits, why don't we show them each other, and then on the eighteenth, we can give it to them and they can get it done. I think that would be the easiest thing for us to do. We could probably, I mean, I don't know.
You say we were having an. We can't, well, we were, and then, but, uh, I can say if you have something to do that. I probably did say that, but I think I was wrong. I remember saying if we have an admin, we could have to be seventeen, other than that, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, I'll be there.
On the eighteenth, we have that meeting anyway, so.
Yeah, so it would be a Monday, meet Monday admin for Tuesday.
Meeting.
Yes. I'll do it at one. We do one.
Could do anything else.
But I'll go ahead and let Nick, if you guys are okay, let him get his little PowerPoint spiel.
Okay, all right, thanks, uh, looks like you have the PowerPoint up. Um, so I don't know if you wanna go through these. Uh, yeah, so we just wanted to do an overview, the public review process, the public open houses, um, talk about some of the public input and the next steps. So for the planning process, if we can go one more slide. Uh, so we're, we're in the final step here, the final task in the final planning ad- uh, adoption process, so next slide. Uh, public, public review process, so go one, yeah, so we, we were out there, uh, a few weeks back, we held quite a few open houses, we had four different open houses at four different locations. Um, we've been coordinating with the planning commission to get some of their initial input, both prior to, to being out there on March twenty-first and March twenty-seventh. Uh, we also had a, um, a presentation earlier this week, or a discussion earlier this week to go over some of their comments on Monday. Um, today, we're here, uh, with the county commission to talk through some of your comments and, and make sure that we're incorporating those into what was intended to be the draft for April twentieth. Um, sounds like you're, you're, and maybe we can talk about that a little bit more, but. You wanna meet again to go through your comments as a group and then get them to us, that might be difficult for us to turn around in two days. Um, but we can, we can see how that kind of timeline works out, or what that timeline would look like. Um, the thought was then that we would be going back to the planning commission on May first with the revised draft plan based on some of their initial input. Um, and comments that we talked about earlier this week, um, as well as comments that you've sent to us. Um, I have had a chance to talk to, uh, at least two of the commissioners to get their initial feedback. Um, I know Commissioner Brennan, we didn't get a chance to finish up, but I was hoping we can go through some of that today, I think we got about halfway through your comments. Um, every, every comment that I think you provided, we were hoping to make revisions for, I, I don't think anything stuck out to me like, uh, that wasn't something that was consistent with the plan. Uh, and then the idea was after May third, you would adopt, um, there might be some revisions that could come after that May third, so you could adopt. Um, with the assumption that you're making revision or making final scribner errors or whatever it might be, no, no significant content changes would be my recommendation. Uh, and then we would have the final document to you by end of May, um, and then you'd go through just recording with the county clerk, so you have the state comprehensive plan approval process in place. Um, it sounds like these dates might, might be a bit more in flux than maybe I had anticipated. So I don't know if you wanna talk about process now, or if you wanna go through some of your comments first, what would you prefer?
Well, I, I mean, I don't think this is the forum for us to go through our individual comments, we were just talking about, um, getting our comments together and putting our heads together at our staff meeting on the seventeenth and having them ready. Um, by our meeting on the eighteenth. And you may not know this, I don't know. How long you've been on it, but I gave substantive comments at the very beginning of this and went through to get you guys on track. Um, but I will go back through it again.
Okay, um, yeah, and I think that the draft that you all had provided recommendations or comments on was a preliminary recommendations memo. So it wasn't the draft comprehensive plan, the draft that you have now in front of you, and, um, that is, that is the plan that ultimately would be adopted. So I do think, I believe that we've inco- incorporated all the comments that you provided from the preliminary recommendations memo as it relates to the draft plan. Uh, but I don't think, other than, uh, Commissioner Brennan, we've received anybody's detailed notes or comments. Um, I guess I was hoping that's what we were gonna talk about today, but if that's not what we're gonna do. Um, and you wanna meet as a, as a group and, and go through this, sort of the three of you and work through what you think the revisions need to be. I don't know that I have much to present today, other than some of the initial comments that were received, both. Uh, just some general thoughts, and then some discussion points that we talked about. Uh, just some general thoughts, and then some discussion points that we talked about with, uh, the planning commission. Again, I don't think anything was significant content changes, overall, the, the feedback was generally positive, or more so was just questions. Um, you know, how did we get to this, you know, what's the intent of this plan, how do we move forward with implementation? Um, but there were a few that we had highlighted with the planning commission that we were hoping to talk about today.
Well, I, I would like to hear that, if Mr. Ted or John didn't mind, the public and the planning commission, I would like to hear what they had to say.
Okay. Okay, yeah, if you could jump to the, to the next page, might be a couple pages down. Um, so these were the open houses that we had conducted, so we had our, our first event in Smithers, uh, our second event was in Anstead. Our third event was in Denise, and our fourth event was in Fayetteville. Uh, if you wanna go through.
I mean, I'm looking at it, it's number twenty nine first, the order I have in it's.
Yeah, uh, go page, sorry, I don't have control of.
Yeah, it's fine, I just wanna see if that was, I seen it here, and I was looking at. Anyway, so I'd like to go with this.
Yeah, the general, the general comments were, I guess, as stated, they're just general, it was more thoughts, you know, disgrust, the mammoth preserve, that was something that came up when we were in Smithers.
Say that again.
So this first page just highlights some of the general public comments received, so it's not necessarily a change to the document, but it's something that we could. Um, if there's room, or if there's places where we can talk about, so for instance, the, the Mammoth Preserve over by Smithers. How do we fold that into some of the recommendations that we're already talking about, so that's something that we can do. Um, the need for better coordination between the National Park Services, the county and the municipalities, we talk about that throughout the, the planning document. But that was just something that I think historically people have concern about, and wanna make sure that those, those different agencies or entities are working together. And, and we do provide guidance and discussion points about that.
See, I, I, I'm curious, a mammoth was, I thought mammoth preserve. Well, but part of it's in Fayette County, I mapped the whole thing. I mapped the whole Mammoth Preserve, and was it not in the comprehensive plan originally?
It, it is, but it's not as explicitly stated in a couple of sections, so I think we just wanna go back through and make sure that there's some spots where we're talking about other areas around Smithers that it's highlighted. Um, a lot of the comments that we received, and that's why these are general comments, uh, they're in the plan, it's just a matter of, are they in the place that someone was expecting them to be? So we're just trying to make sure if there's some places that we need to cross-reference, we will, uh, but I would say for the most part, what we're going through here, it is highlighted in the plan.
I thought it was.
Yeah, um, the next one was, uh, West Virginia communities need investment in healthcare access, that's another example of something that is in the plan. Um, but it is, it is a comment, and it came from more than one person, so we just wanted to highlight that. Um, this next comment was a need for sidewalk extensions through towns. So I think that's a good example of someone talking about what's happening in some of the municipalities, which this plan is not written for. Um, but providing recommendations to connect to sidewalks that do go out into the county, or pathways and trails that go out into the county are, are where we're providing recommendations. Um, concerns with lack of public transportation and transportation options for seniors, we do talk about a couple of different programs that you could provide. Um, and also talk about those that are already in place. Uh, people from out of state are buying homes to use for short-term rentals, I know short-term rentals are, are a significant issue in the county. We do talk about different strategies for addressing short-term rentals, I will say, and, and this sort of was highlighted in our discussions over the last few weeks. Um, zoning is gonna be your best avenue to address short-term rentals, the state does put some restrictions on what a municipality can do. We do recommend that the county does an audit of what your abilities are as a county to regulate short-term rentals. At a minimum, I would update your language to better clarify what you mean by short-term rentals. Um, part of that would be to identify days, right now you say weeks, months, and years. Uh, so you just wanna make that clarification, because that gives you a little bit more regulatory teeth to talk about what you do and don't want to see for short-term rentals. Um, another part of that is enforcement, which is a very challenging thing to do, so we, we talked quite a bit about short-term rentals while we were, um, going through the public outreach process over the week. Uh, water and sewer along Route nineteen needs improvement, yep.
What are some examples of, of things that other communities have done about short-term rentals that have worked?
I mean, we, we provided quite a few examples, not specific case studies, although that's something we could talk about. Um, it does depend on what your issues are, I think in, in your county, what you're coming up against is people are buying a large amount of homes. There aren't specific regulations for what you're trying to get out of them, and then you do have an enforcement issue. There's some people who aren't even going through the process of actually showing their, their properties a short-term rental. Um, there is a balance, I do think people are looking for short-term rentals when they're coming to visit your county. Um, I think what you have to ask, is that something that you wanna provide and allow for, do you wanna limit it? So there's, I wouldn't say that there's any one strategy, like we're doing, we did a project out in Canyon City, and their short-term rental policy was. A bit more restrictive than you may want it to be, um, but that stuff that we, we would recommend as part of a zoning update. And you, you'd wanna get to sort of the crux of what you're trying to accomplish with your rentals, do you wanna limit them? Um, do you want them to be, uh, like, is there a, um. Is there a fee, if there's X amount of issues with that property, or complaints about that property? Um, you know, can someone lose their right to have a short-term rental, like, these are all things that you would need to explore. Uh, the last one was water and sewer along Route nineteen, just needs improvement, that was something that we'd heard from quite a few people. And then just making the connections for water and sewer throughout the county, I know that's something that's already, um, a, a pretty significant objective. Uh, of the county, but it was just, it was an issue that, that people had come, uh, to the table with. The next page talks about more specific comments, um, and this isn't every comment, these were the ones that we felt. You know, either needed clarification, or we just wanted to talk about with. Uh, with, well, first the planning commission, but also with you, the commissioners, the first one was on page twenty-three, Fayette County Places and Districts map. Doesn't represent the current districts, um, and talking to the planning commission, and in talking with the county, I don't, I don't believe that to be true. I don't think the planning commission did either, I think that was just a miscommunication, or, or people don't necessarily read the maps, the.
Can we back up to page twenty-two, you still left packs off of the ten municipalities?
The pa- okay, yeah, we can add that, so your, your comments, John, we'd only gone through half of them, so I wanted to get those all incorporated, and I was hoping we would talk about some of those today.
What I'll do is I'll go through those, and, and, uh, I just need to get your email address from Angela. And that way I can send you the rest of them that we missed, so.
Okay. But I'll write that down, so you had page twenty-two. Sweet packs, okay. Yeah, I think you, you and I went through a list, I have about twenty-two on my, my list here. Okay, and I think you had about fifty, so I don't think we're completely done yet. All right, so page, uh, page thirty-two, consider adding. Uh, Smithers Montgomery to the Fayette Gateway Priority Growth Areas, that was something that in talking with the planning commission, we, we agreed that that's something that we need to. To represent both on the map, but also just in some of the text, it is a significant gateway into the county. Um, you know, that area is a challenging area, because can our county also provides recommendations and support to. Um, you know, those two cities, but we, we do see a need for Fayette County to also provide that guidance. Just to take advantage of how people are entering into Fayette County, so we're just gonna extend that recommendation further to the west. Is that something that you all would agree with?
Yes, yes.
Okay. If I recall, John, that was one that you had as well, so I, I think we talked about that, yeah. Um, page seventy-four, the county should create and maintain a database of vacant buildings for demoing. Um, and even beyond that, not just demoing, it is something that you're already doing, so this is an example of where we just need to say, continue to. Develop a ba- uh, a database, and then share it publicly, um, and it's not necessarily just for demoing, it could also identify buildings that are. Um, you know, great investment projects, if somebody wants to invest and rehab a building, or, or, um, you know, a, a home, whatever it might be. Having a list of those and where they're located would be very helpful.
We already have a map of that, I believe.
Yep, so I think just sharing it, so this is, this is what you'll find when you do the, this type of outreach, and I'm sure you're aware of this, there's a lot of things that are said, and, and you're doing, and you're. Um, it may just not be known to everybody, so I think just making sure the plan says, this is a program that the county's already, um, already administering. This is something that will continue to grow, you could share that information with the municipalities, um, so I think it's just incorporating that language into the plan, so it's more clearly explicit that. You're doing this, um. So we'll be sure to do that. Go ahead.
You say into the municipality?
No, like, share, I would just share that information with municipalities, so you could have, you could have one single database that I isolates it for county or municipalities. Um, but that, that's a program that we've seen successful in other, in other counties. On page ninety-six, transportation is the number one barrier to making youth programs happen. That came from two different people at two different events, uh, it is, it is a significant challenge sometimes for youth programs, if people aren't able to actually get to them. Or if it's not easy to get to them, um, we talked about that with the planning commission, I do think there could be some language in there that, you know, as transportation. I so, or sort of evolves in the county, are there programs that could make it easier for youth or students to get to, you know, these locations? Um, I think it's something worth at least exploring, sorry. Sorry. The. Page one fifteen, regulate and enforce restrictions on junk cars and trash available, or visible from the right-of-way. I know this is also a program that both the state administers, Angela, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's something else too that's already on the books that. This was just a comment that came up from different people, and they wish that there was more that could be done. Um, some of them thought it was more of, uh, I don't wanna say an enforcement issue, um, but it, it is just a challenge, so there are programs already in place for this. Yeah, there's already, yeah, okay, um. The next one, page, uh, page one twenty-five, data representation of broadband coverage is misleading. This individual shared with me a lot of his, uh, speed testing, so he, he was just going around different areas and doing speed tests specifically in his area. And it just wasn't matching up with the data that's shown on the map, that data isn't our data, so it, it does come from a, a different source. So I think it's just worth having a note on that page that says, you know, this is the. I would say, I mean, like, I, it's the same for me, I, someone tells me I can get a hundred megabytes down, and I probably get eighty or sixty.
What is the source of the data?
So the source is on here, let me show it real quick, Tricia might know it offhand, but. Uh, so the source is the Federal Communications Commission, it was updated on June twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, that's, listen, the, um, Economic Development Secretary in West Virginia has a more accurate. Map that we should be using rather than the FCC information, it's probably still overinflated. But it's not as inaccurate as the FCC's.
Okay, um, I think we just had problems getting that data, so if that's something that somebody could.
Web link to it, it's, it's public.
Okay, but pulling it down into a map, we weren't able to actually put it into our maps, but we may just need to put their map and, and go from there. I guess what I'm saying is we can't get their data into our maps, I know it's a publicly available one, we'll just have to do a screen cap or download a, an image.
I can tell you what I don't want in the map, the FCC data, because it's not accurate, I mean, it's grossly inaccurate.
Okay.
So, um, if we can't get the, we can, we can reach out to the Economic Development Secretary, in fact. Um, Jenna Belcher and Jenna Grayson, they have contacts there and can reach out and try to get you some help getting that information.
That would be great. All right, thanks. And I, I believe that was almost the same comment we got from the planning commission, so they said, we just gotta make sure that we get the correct data, and it shouldn't be the FCC data, it should be. The economic development, uh, data, okay, the next one, um. Oh, just talking about on page one thirty-three, the bill, uh, build off of the Rural Energy for America program, thirty to forty million is available right now. We do talk about a lot of different funding sources, this is one that if we need to do a little bit of homework on and add in, or bolster, we can. Uh, but we do talk about quite a different programs that the county should explore for potential funding sources, I know this is stuff that New River Gorge RDA is very. Cued in on as well, so we'll make sure that, um, all of the sources that we're referencing are, you know, valid resources. And are ones that the county should be pursuing. Um, on page one thirty-nine, work with New River Gorge Convention and Visitors Bureau to draft a unified tourism plan. This was a suggestion, my, the takeaway from the planning commission is this might. This is a good recommendation, but it isn't something that this plan should be addressing, which I, I agree with, so we're not doing the unified tourism plan within this document. Um, but the county, the county could explore, working with the New River Gorge Convention and Visitors Bureau to draft a tourism plan, but there are some challenges, just.
I don't like that one either.
Okay, all right, and I think that was, there was kind of a mixed response when we were talking about the planning commission, so I think you had to be to scratch that one.
Yeah, it's big scratched in there.
Okay. Um, on page one forty-one, there were just some questions about what are winter recreation activities that don't require snow. Um, and there's definitely a slowdown, I mean, we heard about that from, from quite a different, uh, business owners and residents, you know, over the winter months. Uh, a lot of the recreation that, that, those that live in the county do, aren't things that people would come from out of state to do, like hunting was an example. Um, or could do, but there are, there are winter activities, so I think just highlighting those, uh, to the best that we can. So if there's things that we're missing, that would be helpful.
Well, we're, the problem is, where can you hunt now? You either gotta be a member.
Right.
You can't hunt the gorge. Ain't that on park property?
There's parts that you can.
What, does the out-of-staters know?
No.
No, they don't know. Yeah, and you gotta be, I mean, it's, I mean, to me. I mean, the, the hunting thing, I agree with it, but I mean, to tell somebody they can hunt here, and then they get here and they can't find a place to hunt.
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry, I might have misspoke, the planning mission said something very similar, it's not. People aren't coming here to hunt, because it's not easy to come here and hunt, I mean, it is.
I can't even find a place to hunt here now.
Yeah, so, right.
I've been here all my life.
So that's a challenge, um, but what are other winter activities that, that people can be doing, so I think it's just. Creating that four seasons economy is something that you can explore, but it's not as easy as what you're seeing in the spring, summer, and fall. The last one that we had on this list was just developing a single community center. Uh, was something that a few people had said, that might not be the right idea, you know, do we want to redistribute community centers throughout the county? Um, you know, that comes with some infrastructure costs, or some challenges, but increasing access to local amenities is certainly something that we said. Or that we heard throughout the process, so we do address that in the plan. I'm not even sure if we're looking for maybe. Well, I mean, guess what are your thoughts, I think having one or two locations in the county can be very challenging, because you're, it's such a large county. Um, but also spreading yourselves out is, is a challenge.
We actually have several community centers already in the county.
I think the, the thought was, if you were to make. Significant improvements to a community center, to bolster one. The thought was spread that out across those different centers throughout the county, so there's a couple of different ways you could go about that. Um, based on feedback that we had heard from the public, I think people would rather see investment throughout the county, so in multiple centers, not just in one or two. Um, so those are just some of the, the thoughts or comments that we had received, like I said, most of the comments or conversations that I had when I was facilitating with people. It was just questions, we talked a lot about the issues and opportunities, the issues page, um, talked a lot about. You know, what, what do you do with this plan when it's done, how is it implemented, who's responsible? And, and that stuff that we'd be working on as part of the action matrix, who is responsible for achieving these goals, or these recommendations? Um, and it'll be partnerships, it can't all just be the county, so relying on partners like New River Gorge RDA, or, or other entities that want to help. Uh, is a big part of what we're gonna do, is part of that final step. Are there any questions, I know you, you wanna sort of do a, a brainstorm with the three of you, are there any questions that you do wanna talk about today, or any?
Are you gonna roll through any other public comments, are you gonna roll through anything else?
Um, this, this is what we had highlighted from public comments.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Well, I have a couple of things I wanna raise, um, Angela, there are a couple of public comments, if we could look into it. One is a reference to the Route nineteen quarter management plan, it has a link, so if that link is still active, we need.
Think I asked you to take it down, Nick, the Route nineteen four management plan, that is no longer in the plan, correct?
It shouldn't be, no.
But I mean, there's a link to a website of ours. Listed here, so I just wanna make sure we are not listing it as a. Okay.
Sometimes people can still get to them even once you take them, see what we can do.
Said our district map is incorrect too, so that's another thing, we could, should be an easy fix.
I don't see any improvement with it when I was doing it. What the.
I think a lot of the confusion is a lot of the people that made the comment about the map. They were thinking of the new voting map. And updated, a lot of people got confused on our district, Texas district map, and then your voting district.
Yeah, we, and we did go through, we talked about that with the planning commission and they, um. We, we'd had the same conversation and then we went through our data and double checked and I, I didn't see anything that was incorrect. Um, but I do know there's some stuff that, you know, we've been asked to add, so we can do that as well. Other comments?
Um, well, I will say to my colleagues, I didn't have somebody call me about, um, trying to get some ordinance or something in place to. To protect kids from the vape stores. And, um, I, I gave her some. Data and asked her to, you know, schedule the. Come in front of us and, and discuss, but, um, I can say that it is. Just about the only type of case that we have in Cleveland. It's all vaping. And so, but her proposal was not opening vape stores. Within a certain range of schools. And, um, you talked to her too.
I'm, I'm gonna look and see if I can find.
One of the municipalities is one open them. We don't have any say so in the municipalities.
Well, that, that's true.
I mean, it's. They're not.
Yeah, he was worried about possibly.
I, I tell you, if they'd opened it up besides the municipality, municipality, they're probably not gonna make any.
I told her also, well, are we gonna then ban gas stations that sell cigarettes? I mean, you know, like you have to be willing to. To distinguish. The vaping issue from, you know, access to alcohol and cigarettes at a, at a gas station or something. So.
Even with the vape stuff, they have the ID in a gas station.
Well, wh- what I'm saying is like. You know, even if they didn't sell the vape stuff in the gas station, you know, are we gonna? You know, not allow vape businesses to open, but allow gas stations that, that sell. Products that kids consume illegally. And also, like I just. Being devil's advocate, like, you know, where, where should we draw the line?
Yeah, no, and those are starting to get into some, some zoning, uh, adjustments that you may wanna make. Is there something that you think you want the Congress plan to speak to?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not to that point yet. I mean, I'm, I'm just looking through these public comments and I wanted to let you know.
Okay.
If you get down with Ted, let me know.
You go ahead, I'm.
I, I, only, only question I have, I guess. Is. The overall map that shows what's preserved and what needs to be developed. Do you actually have that final map, mapping? I know with these, I know with these presentations, the four presentations. The mapping was showed. All what people thought that should be preserved, all what people shot, thought should be developed. Then they was all in one. Do you actually have the final mapping that co-aside with what you have in the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, so on page forty-one, we have the.
I wanted it, I wanted it in pieces. That the final and the pieces, because if part of it's preserved and part of it's developed, it shouldn't overlap each other. That's correct.
Um, yes, correct.
I want the final map. That to me, I can tell more about that mapping.
Okay. So that would be, that's page forty-one. That's the land use plan.
Forty-one in this right here?
Yep.
Okay, the big book, well.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, that's okay. I, I've got the big book. I'll look because what I, what. I brought the other day and what you was showing, you said that that was just an outline of what everybody thought.
Hmm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
We, we was in Anstead.
Yeah, but I'm trying to remember what yours, I mean, there were. Oh, you're talking about the back of the book. So the, yeah, that's community feedback. So there was, there's a series of maps that identify where people would like to see things. Preserved or where they'd like to see, um, you know, potential developments, where they wanna see roadway improvements. That factored into our suitability analysis for redevelopment or for future growth. Um, and it's all weighted. So every, every factor that we take in, it takes community input, it takes. Um, what's developable, like some people would, would identify places that have thirty or forty percent slope. So we're, we're probably not. Recommending that be an area that be developed. And it's not that it can't. Um, but there's other areas that are more appropriate for redevelopment. What's its access to current infrastructure? What's its access to? Um, you know, an existing roadway system. So all of that is what, and that, that's a whole separate appendix that we have provided. What the suitability factors are to support this land use plan that you see here in the document on page forty-one. And then I would just remind everybody, when we say land use plan, it's not to say that all of this will be developed. Um, even within the scope of this twenty years. It's that when development proposals come in. Is it consistent with this land use plan? Is this area, an area that we identified for commercial or residential? Um, or whatever it might be, or is someone preserving something, or is someone? Providing a, a, a new site in an area that we didn't forecast, or we didn't show as a different use? And is that something that you wanna explore? So that, that map on page forty-one should be used as your benchmark when someone comes in on whether or not it's appropriate for the county based on. All the different input points that we collected through this process.
Nick, I'm, this is the second time you didn't mention it. First time I read it somewhere. But, um. Our plan is, should be a ten-year plan. It's not twenty-year plan. We have to do this every ten years.
You do it every ten years, but when we do land use plans, we try to look out. So we do five, ten and twenty. Um, and even if you update, like there's communities that we work in, they gotta update every five years. You still wanna project out in twenty years. It's just an easier metric. But we don't, we don't just look at twenty. So it's five, ten and twenty. When we do this action matrix too, we'll identify recommendations that are appropriate in five years. So hopefully you're done with these in the next five years. There's some that you could get done in the next ten, and there's some that might be too big to get done in the next ten years. Um, but you're right, you'll, you'll, you have to require an update every ten years, or the state requires an update. You may find in five years that you've checked off a lot of these, or policies or recommendations are changing, and you want to update this or amend it. Even before that. Um, but we do look at the scope of, uh, a land use plan more than just a, a ten-year scope.
Well, I like that approach. I'm just, I want, that's the second time I'd heard a twenty-year reference.
You're right, yes.
With regard to the comments, I, I, I don't know because I haven't read the, the complete plan yet, but. Um, is childcare included in, in that, the?
Yeah. We did, and, uh, a woman came up and talked to me about that for a while. I don't know that we explicitly talk about childcare. I'd have to ask Tricia if there's a, a, a series of recommendations. Um, and it was.
No, there isn't any specific recommendations related to childcare.
And it was interesting. It is an issue. And, and the more that I talked to her about it, the more I realized it, it just might not be an issue that people knew to. That this plan could talk about. So I do think that's something that we could add in, um, in a couple of different locations, especially where we talk about like public services. Um, around page one hundred, one-ten. Um, I think that's an appropriate recommendation. She was talking more about in a municipality, but I, I think that's relevant to a county too.
Well, it is.
Yep.
It's something that we hear about quite frequently.
Yeah, we have staff members who have issues.
Yeah, I was surprised. I, I was surprised because we were standing at the issues. I'm like, that just didn't. I didn't see that come up, but, um. She started talking about it and then someone standing next to her. I mean, it, it was a whole thing, so. Um, I do wonder, and that was a note I wanna add, I, I. I think I talked about this with, um. Mr. Brennan, where we were just saying, there's some issues that are identified. Uh, that I wonder how much COVID played a factor in, in, in that. Like that might be why childcare did or didn't come up as much, because this, some of this was collected during COVID and then it came out, you know, as we're talking more through the public process. Um, there were a few things like that where we may just go back and make some notes. Um, you know, in, in light of kinda where we were in the time. Um, you know, this issue may not have been as highlighted as, as much as was. And then broadband was highlighted as one of the key issues and it, and it still is. I wonder if that bubble would be as big. I wonder if the input points would have been that many. Um, it's, and it's hard to know, but. It's something I think that's worth noting.
Did you guys have, um? Wireless in there?
Wireless, yeah. And now that was something else we talked about. Um, and you know, I, as an out of towner, apparently Verizon is not great in that area, so. I found that out. I had literally just switched to AT&T the day I got home, uh.
That Marshall's not right. I'll be right back.
Yeah, that, that's the one that does work around here.
DT, that's a, like, of course, um. Yeah, and so that's. It's, you know, you become very accustomed to being able to have access to making a phone call or shooting off a text. So it's. That's different than broadband, but it's still an issue for connection. So it's something that we'll be sure to add.
That's the map, that's the actual. That's the future land use. Well, we should. It's in your book.
Thank you.
Oh, what did the planning commission take to go through this? They did it on the road.
They did it on the road.
I mean, a few of them did come. Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, and I would say for the most part, um, there were a couple of minor revisions or additions. I think Tr- and Trish and I did kind of a recap after our call. It's kind of the same thing that we had during the open house. There were a couple of comments from the planning commission that. We talked about the thing that they wanted us to talk about it. I, I just don't think it was in the correct location. So we're just gonna move some of the text around. Um, we talked about fit and, and where that should be, uh, located in the text. And it was the paragraph before. It is a little out of order, so we just moved it around. Um, so I think for the most part though, they, they supported the plan and I think we're looking to see what your comments would be on, on the current draft. And then this revised draft that we sent back to you, I'd like to highlight just some of the areas where we're making changes. Um, we have been working with different partners, uh, specific stakeholders that we wanna make sure we're getting their input, people that could be providing support for implementation down the line. Um. That input's been coming in. Uh, over the last couple of, I guess almost now, six weeks. So the goal is to get this all sort of packaged up in the next few weeks, so we could get this to you on the twentieth, um, to get your. You know, your final discussion points when we meet on May third. Um. So in terms of timeline, I don't know how soon. You're able to get us your comments, or if we're. In a position now where maybe we need to just deliver the revised draft plan to you on the twentieth. And, and that's what we have a discussion on, on the third. I, I suppose I. Would go back to you.
Well, I mentioned earlier, we're, we're having a staff meeting on the seventeenth and we'll discuss it there.
Okay.
We're gonna all strive to have our comments completed by then.
Uh, is the group? Are you comfortable with us making, so say you get that to us on the, the eighteenth, um, or the seventeenth, whatever it is. Um, I don't know that our team, depending on how substantial the comments might be, I don't know if we could turn that around by the twentieth. If, if we are able to get it to you a few days before our scheduled meeting on the third. Um, and we can highlight where those revisions are made. Is that what we could talk about on that May third meeting?
No, you need to have it ready for the planning commission by its May first meeting.
Well, and we'll have it for them for sure, but I'm saying that. It's gonna be difficult for them to have a lead time. But again, their comments weren't significant. I mean, most of what they talked about are, are in line with what even we're talking.
Need to see our comments. What we're, what we're trying to do is get our comments to the planning commission, so. We don't have to send it back to them. If we don't, if, if we see something is missing. So we want our comments incorporated prior to May first, so the planning commission. Can review our comments. And incorporate or recommend, you know, make some recommendations so we can formalize everything on May third.
Um. Yeah, and I. I under- I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that's a really tight turnaround, depending on what your comments are. So we'll, we'll, I guess we'll do our best, um. But if you get us our, typically we like to give at least two weeks on a review. We were already pushing it to about a week and a half. If you get us your comments on the eighteenth, our team. Again, depending on how substantial the comments are, hopefully we can get it done by the twenty-first. I'd have to check our team's schedule to see if that's possible. It might be coming the week of the twenty-fourth, which means they wouldn't have a substantial amount of time for review. We would be discussing that live on the May first meeting. And going through what your comments were. I know they'll receive those comments ahead of time too. Um. It's just that, that's all. That's all I was saying, so.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, this, this is the schedule that you guys presented to us. So if you haven't staffed it properly, um, you know, that's another matter. We are, you know, going by the timeline that, you know, we were provided here. And briefed on today.
Okay.
So, you know, and, and that May first meeting required a thirty-day notice, so. Um, you know, I hope if you don't have enough people, um, assigned to work on incorporating. Our comments that, that you do, because, you know, as you know, this. Project is very, very behind.
Right, so. I know this group's had about six to eight weeks to review the, the draft. So I, we were hoping to have the comments prepared and ready today. Um.
We were not given any information about when you wanted our comments other than this.
Okay.
So, that's a communication issue.
So the revised draft plan was planned on being delivered on the twentieth. Um. And all I'm saying is it, it may take us a little bit more time to make those revisions, but we will get the draft done by May first. I'd like to get it done. The week before, so they have a chance to review it.
Now that I got this map in front of me here, this is what, this is the only thing I need right here. I need to blow it up, look at it. This, you could email this. Has this been emailed to me, the final one?
Um, I can, I did email it to you about a month ago, but I'll just re-mail it to you.
Okay, and this is what I was, this is, tells me more than what I, this tells me what I wanna know. So, it, it, are you looking at the future land use plan?
I am.
That, that top left, rural preserve. See that?
Uh, the, in the legend, yes.
Yeah. So everything in that color is considered not developable. It shouldn't be developed.
It'll include agriculture, single-family detached residential, and it'll include, uh, forested, forested areas.
Okay, so how are we gonna get? Infrastructure on nineteen without developable property? On nineteen?
Question. I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, what I'm saying is. That, you know, we put in here that we want infrastructure on nineteen, ref water and sewer is, is needed.
Yep.
Okay, without any la- uh, ability, if it's preserved. Then you really, it's hard to, uh, develop it. Shouldn't it be marked as developed property that needs to be developed? As commercial, as commercial?
So you wanna show all of, I, I mean, our recommendation is not to show all of Route nineteen is.
I didn't, I didn't want all of it. I'm just asking, none of it shown. There's a little piece right here that's already zone commercial that I see. It's probably the. The old song or property. There's another piece that's shown, it comes, uh, commercial of close to sixty.
Mm-hmm.
There's another piece out here. So I'm just curious, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, I, I think I understand. So in terms of rural preserve, you could still put infrastructure through there. The idea is that you're not.
You can still put infrastructure, but who's gonna want to, if, if you cannot develop the property, that's been the problem for twenty years. I'm just, I'm just telling you my, my take on this. No utility company is going to build infrastructure on someplace you cannot. Bring capital back into the utility companies.
Even if they're making a connection to a commercial node or an employee.
It's been that way for twenty years, and if it's still that way, it's gonna be that way for twenty more. Uh, before the US nineteen quarter management plan restrict any development on nineteen. That's the reason some of sixty and, and part, and I'm not saying all of it. I'm saying I think it's. There's, I done forgot the road. But I mean, I mean. I- if you cannot fund it. How can you build it, especially expensive as, as it is? I mean, I'm just, I mean, I'm just telling you, I thought it's a reason it hasn't been developed, or there's not sewer and water on nineteen. Because if you cannot build anything that could sustain. The, the suspending. It's not gonna go there. So I mean, I, I'm just telling you as a, as a.
So is this, is this basically recommending?
This is what the final one is. This is what I wanted to say.
So this is the rec, this is recommending that that land not be developed?
Be preserved, yeah.
Based on the, based on the comment.
Yeah, based on the comments. Yeah, based on the comments. Th- this is what the only thing I need. I didn't need all this other crap. But I'm just, I'm just telling you.
You can't have single-family detached. I just wanna make sure that that's clear, but okay.
So I mean, I'm just, I'm just telling you, I mean, I don't know what, if you, if you've dealt with utility companies, but. I mean, I, I, my take is it, you know, everybody wants infrastructure on nineteen and wants sewer water across the river. Well, you know, there's people across the river that hasn't had water in sewer, probably never get sewer the way this plan's wrote. Because you cannot build anything over there. The reason there's so much infrastructure in Oak Hill and Fayetteville. Is all the building. I mean, I, I mean, maybe I'm looking at, maybe I'm wrong. But I mean, no one is gonna spend any, any amount of money anywhere that they cannot. Get funding back from. To, to sustain it. So I mean, uh. And nineteen does run. All the way through there into Nicholas County. So I mean, that, that's, that's, and, and I'm not saying build a metropolis there. I'm just saying that, that it needs to be, there needs to be more, it needs to be more relaxed than what they're saying here. Because now, looking at this, that's the reason nobody's even came here.
Okay, I mean, I.
I'm giving you my opinion, I, you know, the two. I don't know whether they feel the same way, I'm giving you my opinion, and, and to me, you, you know, if you're talking about sewer water across the river, you know how many people have sewer and water across the river, still been begging for water for twenty years? I don't know whether you know that, but I mean, I've, I've heard it for a long time.
Yeah, no, I mean, we have the maps in here, I'm.
Yeah, yeah, so how, how is that gonna, how is that gonna come fruition of having water and sewer to everybody across the river? When you can't, there's no, there's no business or, it can be, it's not business friendly, and I mean, I just.
I mean, I've done, I, I will just say though, I mean, we've done quite a few county planes where you do put utility and infrastructure in place along a major road, but it doesn't necessarily require a tap to.
Who pays for it?
What's that? Yeah, there's different funding mechanisms, and it depends on how large the developments are at those.
How large the developments are, you just said it, how large the developments are.
At the node.
That has developments in order to have infrastructure.
Uh, the complete, my complete, at the nodes, so you don't necessarily have to have large developments along the entire corridor as much as you need to have some significant nodes, which is what we show in the, in the, in the land use plan. But if there are comments to the land use plan, and it, and it sounds like there are, this would be the time to provide those comments.
Yeah, well, I think, well, I mean, the two commissioners will talk about it, but I mean, I'm just telling you my thoughts on it, and talk about infrastructure. It's not gonna happen if you can't develop property.
Okay.
That's just the way it is, I mean, it's been that way for twenty years. And if we still do it, and I don't know anybody, a lot of people out there don't understand it, because they got sewer and water in the cities around here. They don't understand that, the reason they got it is because look what's here in their areas. Gotta have in all the other areas, and they already have infrastructure. If you can't have the ability to build somewhere, nobody's gonna go out there and spend fifty million dollars on the water, sewer, and utilities for one house. So I'm just giving you my take.
Okay, I appreciate it. Um, there is a, a, I, it was a note that I meant to add, but it was internal. Um, the, there's a, a mine operations that's just south of the label on the land use map, just south of the Fayetteville label, and I don't, that seems to be an error on our map, so that's something that we're looking into.
This is, I have another issue that I don't, I don't know whether it's included in there or not, but it, is there anything in there about cooperating with neighboring counties regarding economic development?
No.
Because in, in a small state like this, um, that often is the pathway to getting state and federal funding, is if you can show that it's going for a greater good. And this corridor along nineteen, we also have neighboring counties that are national park, have national, the national park runs into them. Um, those are highly significant things, because we have Raleigh County on one side, there are out nineteen corridor, and we have Nicholas on the other. Um, so those are, you know, that cooperation, which we have been doing um, all along, is something that we should incorporate in there, because we really need to have a regional focus here.
Okay.
As we look at public transportation, as we look at things that affect all of us, those are, you know, broadband, that's another area where we're partnering with, with neighboring counties.
Yeah, I, I, to that point, I believe the only area we'd probably speak to outside of your county would be Canawha.
And that's one that we really don't work with.
Yeah.
Raleigh and, 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 uh, Nicholas are the big ones, but also we've worked with Summers County on some stuff. Um.
Greenbrier.
Greenbrier County.
I'll speak to that really quickly, Allison, this is gonna belter, uh, I just walked in, so I'm not gonna go down the ride a whole time. Doesn't happen, um, I'll go down that later with Tom and Allison, but on the regional. He actually talked to Nick about what would happen if we wanted to expand this into sort of a regional comprehensive plan. Obviously, there's a lot of cost to deal with that, so it might be a conversation with some other committees here today, like Nick and House Levine did offer a, a rate that said, like, we can take the Fayette County Comp Plan and expand that, and I think that would be a good idea, but we, we need to get some other counties on board with helping fund that, but I, I think you're spot on, and I think Nick noticed that very early on, like, is Woodboat Wells as a regional strategy or a regional comp plan? But we did the combines and the costs and what we paid for it and expect it to be big, so I think there are probably some things he can leave him as it relates to the national park, but I would love if we could talk, take this plan and expand it to the other counties and, and talk about the throwing some fun, but House Levine did offer us a rate to say if we, if we do that, you know, that they would be willing to take that one.
Well, my comment isn't so much, you know, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, but I do wanna see in our comp plan, a regional, you know, cooperative focus on certain things that affect us, and, you know, like the examples I just gave, like transportation and things like that. Broadband.
I was, I was gonna say, we do talk about that at broadband, but I think that could, could be extended to other infrastructure and other policy programs, so that's a good, we'll make that addition.
Well, and we're kinda looking at, you know, and, and Jenna could speak to this more, more than I can, but um, we're trying to look at developing that corridor, I mean, both counties are trying to develop toward each other. You know, everybody's building toward Fayette, and so, you know, that, I feel like there has to be some kind of commentary on it in this plan.
Yeah, I think this is probably a conversation that we need to have, I think Jenna does the other turn and it's gone, but I think we probably wanna have a conversation specifically about nineteen, and next step, we are trying to prioritize areas on like Alex mentioned, from office and ends, and then saying what in the middle in Fayette County. And so, obviously, some of that would be preserved, but some of that can be developed, and we wanna talk about high some issues of that specifically. So I think maybe that's, maybe like a deep down, uh, some conversation that we need to have while we can still do some input.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the things I wanted to note is we were talking about what the development could look like along Route nineteen. I, this plan needs to provide a recommendation for a more detailed corridor study. I, at a countywide level, uh, we typically don't show, you know, commercial or employment going along the entire stretch, just because the policies are, are so broad, the land use plan is broad in its recommendations. But I, I would recommend highlighting that corridor and seeing a detailed corridor study should be done to determine where areas are appropriate for development beyond just these nodes. Um, what that would look like, how that would impact infrastructure improvements. Um, those are, those are the kinds of requirements, I'm sorry, those are the kinds of recommendations a, a com- a comprehensive plan should provide.
So could the commission come up with that before a certain date, and you put that in here?
The corridor plan?
Yeah, I mean, well, just, just.
Yeah, you could, I would.
In this plan, can the commission go ahead in the next month before the planning commission? Can we put our recommendations in, what we think it should be, and then you put it in the plan?
I would recommend, so what I would recommend doing is highlighting with a boundary where a corridor plan should be, a lot, i- if it's the entire corridor, if it's.
That's right, and I understand that, because I didn't map the whole corridor.
Yeah.
Everybody said I wanted a map from Nicholas County to Raleigh County, and I didn't.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean.
Hey, Nick, can you send us a cost estimate for a corridor plan for nineteen, please?
I can, yes, um, but I will say, that's not something you'd wanna do in the next month. My recommendation would be, highlight what the boundary of a corridor plan should be on nineteen. In the plan, what I would say is the, um, you know, this is the future land use plan as it stands. Uh, once you go through the corridor planning process, that would be an amendment to this land use plan. So there'd be an addendum to this document, and it would supplement what the recommendations of the land use plan are, and it'd be more detailed. And I, just based on everything we heard from the public over the last few weeks, I, I strongly encourage you to do a Route nineteen plan and get more public input, not just from residents, but also some property owners, um, different representatives from the municipalities, uh, it's clearly an area that is, that is, um, that requires more detailed study.
It is, but again, but my point was to a, to a larger, I was making a larger point with the regional cooperation, not just with regard to developing that corridor. That's not the, that's not the only boundary we have with other counties.
All right, we got a ten thirty, is that all?
It's, yeah.
But, appreciate it, we'll be in touch with you.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Hey, Ruth, you wanna read number, you wanna do number ten real quick before we go into?
Okay, um, we continue the postphone number ten, uh, the clarification of County Work Week and the employment handbook to the April eighteenth meeting.
Second, all in favor? Continue, she got that lawyer talk.
Yeah.
All right, ten thirty, uh. I just wanna see if the commission wants to go in executive session to speak with the lawyer.
About, about the Boy Scout bond.
That was, yes.
Yeah, I'll second her.
I am being, bringing the meeting back to order, and, uh, regarding the discussion decision on the Boy Scout, uh, bond resolution.
We met an executive session and no decision was made.
Are you good, thank you, Ms. Taylor? I forget that all the time. All right, anything, anything to say?
Um, yeah, I'd like to go ahead and move that we approved the Boy Scout bond resolution.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that all, Miss Jen?
I think that's it.